Good afternoon and welcome to the June 22nd, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Pinehurst Villages Council. We welcome you all here. There are several folks in the room tonight, and I believe there will be several also watching on live stream. Those of you who are watching the meeting, if you wish to send a comment for council's attention, you may do that by email to the following address: publiccomments@vopnc.org. And those written comments will be circulated to the council members after tonight's meeting, but you're welcome to participate in that way. We have quite an interesting agenda of things to accomplish tonight, and so we welcome you all here to participate in that. Having called the meeting to order, I would like to call on Dr. Matt Stillman to deliver the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you pray with me? In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, sovereign God, we thank you that we have been gifted with the fact that we live in a representative republic, and we thank you that our leaders are our servants who serve with the will and the consent of those whom they govern. Father, we pray this afternoon, as we conduct business, that we would be honest in all of our communications, that we would be compassionate in any disagreements, and that we would be confident that if we walk with integrity, that you will lead us together into a bright future. In recognition of the hostility and divisions that are rampant in the world, we pray this afternoon for a spirit of peace and unity, and we pray these things in the name of that consummate servant leader, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise. Stillman. Always good to have you here. Moving into the agenda items for the evening, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Three, which is reports from the village manager, members of the village council. Mr. Sanborn, do you have a report tonight?
Thank you, John. I have a few things I'd like to comment on tonight. I guess the first one would be to let everybody know that we have wrapped up our FY21 Street Resurfacing Program for the year, where we were able to go back in and add in a section of Fry Road due to having some funds left over this past year. We got 4.6 miles done this past year, which is pretty good compared to our more recent performance in that regard. We were really helped by what were some pretty nice market prices out there this time last year when we locked in that contract. That won't be the case, I'm sure, this coming year, as everybody's kind of aware, looking around what's going on in our economy, prices have escalated pretty substantially and seem to be continuing to head in that direction. So not sure exactly what we're going to wind up with for this next year. We have done the preliminary work in prioritizing our resurfacing plan for next year, but we won't know exactly what we're going to get done until we do some contract negotiation on that. So more to follow on that. Some of you may have noticed that the Magnolia Road Streetscape Project is underway now. I think we've been talking about that and planning for it for about four years, so it's good to see that underway. And then finally, I'd like to comment on some staff changes, some turnover. We're going to have the opportunity to love on Natalie here in a second, but we have another person back there in the back of the room, Lauren Craig, who's going to be leaving us as well, and very sad to see her go. Lauren's taking a position as the Director of Family and Children's Programs for her church, and she's made that decision that that's the right thing for her and for her family going forward, and we certainly respect that. We don't want to see her go, and she's going to leave a pretty substantial hole for us to fill as well. So we'll be looking for somebody that has good data management experience and understands the Baldridge framework and understands how to facilitate the strategic planning process going forward. So we'll see how that goes. Very, very large shoes to fill, though. On the bright side, we have a new senior planner on our staff. Alexandria Rai has joined our planning staff as a senior planner. She's not here tonight, but it's good to have her in the saddle. She comes to us from Sanford. And then we also did an internal promotion this past week. Megan Skellerup was promoted into the position of our Assistant Public Services Director this past week, and she's making that transition right now. She was our engineering technician in public services, and we'll be looking for somebody to fill that role now. That concludes my report, John.
Thank you very much, Jeff. For my reports, I would mention three items. First of all, on June 9th at the Fair Barn, First Health held a wonderful reception for all of its volunteers from its various facilities in the surrounding counties to thank them for the service they provided to all the residents of central North Carolina during the COVID pandemic. And council members were invited to that. I attended, Jeff Sanborn attended, and others. It was a wonderful thank you. They've been very gracious and continuing to thank the village of Pinehurst, and I'm looking at Mr. Sanborn because the comments are really directed at him and his staff for the wonderful way that they were received and the Fair Barn was made available to them and the cooperation from the staff during that time, Jeff, as you know. And earlier, of course, a couple of weeks ago, the First Health made a nice contribution to the village, and we'll be using that to do some enhancements to the Fair Barn over time. Second report will be that we had a meeting yesterday afternoon of the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. The committee meets once a month, as many of you will know. The focus of yesterday's meeting was input from the Neighborhood Advisory Committee on the West Pinehurst Park Development, which was presented, some plans presented to the council at our last meeting. We continue to seek input on the West Pinehurst Park. The survey is not currently operative, but you can communicate back to the council and the staff with respect to your feelings about how that park might be developed in the future by either going to engage Pinehurst, I guess, or really through my VOP would be another way to do that. We recommend continued dialogue with the public on how that park should be developed. And then finally, just a little earlier this morning, Judy Davis and Lydia Bosch joined me at the tour of the new Pinehurst Elementary School. This is a fabulous facility, as all of the new elementary schools are throughout Moore County. It was really extraordinary to see that building today. And I asked for a couple of statistics that were then given to me by management of the schools. The old buildings, there were six on the campus that comprised that school. The old buildings were 71,600 square feet in six buildings, starting in 1940, 1949, '57, and 1992. The capacity, I think the ending enrollment at the school was about 367 when it closed. When the new school reopens, there will be 550 to 600 probably students at the school, and the square footage is now about 120,000 square feet, and the capacity of the school is around about 800. Again, that's pretty common with all the new elementary schools that have been built. They're all at a maximum capacity in the future of around 800 students. So that's quite a nice addition to the Pinehurst neighborhoods and to our elementary school, which we're delighted to have stay right with us in town, and it was a very nice tour. There'll be other availability of that school at some point in the future for everyone to look at, I'm sure. That concludes my reports for the evening. I'll call on Mayor Pro Tem Judy Davis.
I thought you were to start with Lydia. Sorry. So yes, I went to the Pinehurst Elementary School tour this morning. It is a fabulous facility and a tremendous asset for the families in our community. Yesterday, or Sunday, we concluded the Men's U.S. Open. On Thursday, we'll have the arrival of the U.S. Women's Open Trophy at 10 o'clock at the Welcome Center in Southern Pines, and everybody's invited to attend that. The '22 U.S. Open will, of course, for women, will be at Pine Needles. And then Shakespeare in the Pines is back this summer with Twelfth Night with two weekend performances, August 20th to 22nd and August 27th to 29th. So we are slowly coming back to life in our village with the arts and culture and recreation. That's it for me, John. Thank you.
Kevin Drum.
I just wanted to add to Judy's report. The villages, businesses are starting a new program. It's Thursday's late till eight. So starting this Thursday, all the retail shops will be open till 8 o'clock on Thursday, and they're going to continue this throughout the summer. It's a real exciting thing, and I hope that the pilot here will print something about it, and I hope that you all will support the village retailers, because if you're like my wife, who's really busy and works all day, she doesn't have time to shop except in the evening, and I think there's a lot of people that fit that paradigm, and we'd like to see you out shopping in the village of Pinehurst Thursday night. Thank you.
Lydia.
Thank you, John. Continuing with the golf theme, in Carolina's Golf Magazine this week, there are four pages advertising golf in the Sandhills. It starts with CVB, which has got a picture of the U.S. Open Trophy, but it ends with a little blurb about the Pinehurst Resort, and I love this language, "The Cradle of American Golf, the St. Andrews of America." And this little bit is just chock full of good information about what the resort is doing. So there's that. But also, starting next Tuesday, the Men's North and South Amateur Tournament is going to begin. Play will begin, I think, on Tuesday at the resort. It's two days of stroke play on Course Number Two and Course Number Four, followed by match play. But it's 121st anniversary. This is the longest consecutive running amateur tournament for men in the country. So I guess that means it started in 1900? I mean, do the math, it started in 1900. But it's a great opportunity. If you've got some time to kill, go out and you get to Walt Number Two or Number Four, you get to see great amateur golfers, and so I just encourage you and your friends to do that. Thank you, John.
Jane Hoagman.
Thanks, John. I just echo Kevin's reminder to everyone that Thursday is the shop late until eight in Pinehurst.
Good reminder. I'll be there. I'm sure you all will. Moving on from Agenda Item Number Three, then, to Agenda Item Number Four. This is a motion to approve our consent agenda. These are reports that have been visited by the council and studied before and are taken for approval all in one motion. However, I will ask, are there any aspects of the council meeting minutes or other budget amendments that a council member wants further discussion on or to pull that out? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Kevin Drum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lydia Bosch. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on into Agenda Item Number Five, Presentation to Natalie Hawkins. I may not get through this. We've all had the chance to say our goodbyes to Natalie over the past month, and even though that had occurred at a number of times and places, the Pinehurst Village Council wanted to make sure that you had a resolution that marked our admiration for you and generally tried to grasp all the things you did for the village of Pinehurst. Now, I didn't feel it was appropriate for the five of us, including staff, to try to do this by ourselves, so I thought it'd be appropriate if we could reach out and invite other council members, former council members, to attend tonight's meeting. Some of them are here, others had a conflict, or the weather may have come up a little bit this afternoon, but we have some comments and nice wishes, I think, made to you in a few minutes as well. So I'm not going to look at you while I read this, or I won't make it through. I'll catch this right here. "A resolution honoring the service of Mrs. Natalie Dean Hawkins as Assistant Village Manager of Pinehurst, North Carolina, that whereas the Village Council of Pinehurst, North Carolina wishes to acknowledge and express its appreciation to Mrs. Natalie Dean Hawkins for her dedicated service to the citizens of Pinehurst as Assistant Village Manager for Administration, and whereas Mrs. Natalie Hawkins has served the village of Pinehurst as Assistant Village Manager for Administration from 2005 to 2021, and as staff representative to our sister city in China, Xinjiang Dong Autonomous County, Hunan Province in 2015," I remember that trip, "and whereas as Assistant Village Manager for Administration, she has devoted her time, energy, and talents to the village and provided experience and sound judgment on its behalf with unfailing integrity, dignity, and thoughtful reflection. And whereas Mrs. Hawkins was instrumental in leading continuous village improvement efforts, including the development of the Village 2019 Comprehensive Long-Range Plan, creation of the Village of Pinehurst Registered Logo in 2014, and implementation of numerous Information Technology Department advancements. And whereas Mrs. Hawkins was instrumental in using the Baldridge Performance Excellence Framework since its 2012 implementation, which led to the village's selection as the 2020 Malcolm Baldridge National Quality Award, the nation's highest award for organizational performance and excellence. And whereas Mrs. Hawkins was also and continues to be a strong supporter for the village center businesses and a proponent of village center vitality reflected in both public and private initiatives. Now therefore be it resolved by the Village Council of the Village of Pinehurst, North Carolina, in the regular meeting assembled 25th day of May, 2021, as follows. Section One, the Village Council hereby expresses, on behalf of the citizens of Pinehurst, deep appreciation and gratitude for the gifts of time, ability, and commitment in carrying out the duties of Assistant Village Manager for Administration for the village of Pinehurst. And Section Number Two, that a copy of this resolution be spread on the permanent minutes of the village of Pinehurst, and a copy thereof duly executed by the mayor and the village clerk to be presented to Mrs. Hawkins as just a token of our gratitude. Natalie, we framed one for you. We didn't spread it around."
Well, those of you who know me know that I am a humble servant, so I'm not used to the applause like this, so thank you very much. And thank you, council, for honoring me with this resolution. When you called me, John, and told me that you wanted me to come back for this, I was extremely flattered and just very honored. I think that it was an extreme privilege for me to be able to serve this community for 20 years. I met some wonderful people, worked with some fantastic elected officials devoted to this community, elected officials that are also in the audience, wonderful staff. We have the best staff ever here at the village of Pinehurst. And community members, residents, people like Tony Elms, who call me up and tell me what you thought about something, and we could debate and chit chat for hours. No, it's just a wonderful, this is a wonderful place. I mean, Pinehurst is a place like none other. I spent 20 years trying to improve the quality of life here, and I think I had an impact on that, and I will continue to have an impact, hopefully, in my new role. So I will continue to serve the residents of Pinehurst, just in a different capacity, and thank you, council, very much for this. It was my pleasure to serve.
Now, as I said, we thought that it would not be appropriate to do this without some comments and visits from former council members. So moving across the room, I'd like to start with John Boldry. John, if you'd use the microphone in front there to make any comments you would like, and then we'll go on to others.
Well, we've talked a lot about service and service to the community. I think what I would like to say is I would like to say thank you for the service of the council members. I don't think there's a time when I came into the office buildings here and just walked up to your door, knocked, and you said, "Come in." So regardless of what the issue was that I was trying to understand better, I always left better prepared for the meetings and representing the community. Congratulations on your new position. Perhaps there'll be more time with Scott and the family, don't know, but I hope that is the case. But for all that you've done for the council members going back your tenure here, I would just say, on behalf of all of us, those who are continuing to serve as council, thank you for your knowledge, your expertise, your understanding, and your patience. God bless.
John.
Jack Farrell, would you care to make some comments?
Natalie, thank you very much. I'll second everything that anyone has said so far and will say. My first, I guess, official dealings with Natalie was, what, some nine years ago when I wrote that little white historic tour book, and I thought it was a good thing to publish, but I couldn't find anyone that found a whole lot of interest in it in the village at that time. And Natalie stepped up to the plate and took an interest and realized how important it could be, and she managed to somehow or another, I found out later how difficult this was, carve out some money in the budget and get, you know, a number of them printed, and we started there, and I'm eternally grateful for that. The other thing I'm very grateful for, and Saint Natalie, I call her, was her ability, the short time I was on council, was Natalie's ability to try to find some logic and order to the chaotic conversations that we would have on council, and so I don't see how she ever did that, but she did a great job in doing that to bring order to the apparent chaos. So what a great job, and congratulations.
Natalie, congratulations on your tenure here and your new adventure. You're going to be awesome. Looking forward to so many great things from you. You are the total package. You have the left brain and right brain skills to handle people, analytics, process, vision, you name it. It's a privilege to know you, and best of luck.
I don't think I've missed any former council members that are here. I think we're all right. I would just end by saying, Natalie, again, thank you so much. Scott, good luck. The pressure's on here. Moving on, those of you who may need to leave, please don't. Stay with us. It'll be exciting. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is a continuation of our discussion with respect to Ordinance 21-07 for the proposed zoning amendment. And as we do that, I wanted to make a couple of summary. I won't call them introductory comments because they'll repeat a few things I mentioned a few weeks ago, and that is that, at this point in time, as we consider this ordinance and a proposal yet to be put to the council and the planning committee from the USGA, we stand at a, I've always felt, a very unique point in Pinehurst's history. And as I had mentioned about a month ago, we have, at least in my mind, kind of three dates or three time periods that I think will be marked into the future as not only founding, but very transitional and hopefully very successful. First date, of course, would be 1895, and the few years after the founding, when the hotels were initially built and golf was introduced kind of by accident, and other things happened to present the village based on the work of Frederick Law Olmsted and then later by Donald Ross. And then we move to the 1970s, when it transitioned from the Tufts family to Diamond Head, which was a difficult time, but then thankfully to Club Corporation and the Dedman family and their wonderful stewardship of Pinehurst since that time. And then I would take it from that point in the early 80s, after those transitions occurred, to where we are today. I think that it'll be seen in the past that this timeframe of the golf house Pinehurst and the construction of the USGA buildings and potential construction of the lodge, which we'll talk about tonight, will be very transformative, and we all hope in a very positive way to the village of Pinehurst. Now, in village government, we have to represent all the people, and as elected officials, our obligations are to them, as well as to all of our stakeholders, the resort included, to make sure that we're doing the things that will preserve, protect the village, and to make sure that the reason that the USGA wants to come here and that the lodge will be built will continue into the future. And there's been considerable public input on that, a lot of helpful input, sometimes concerns and opportunities come and work close, and to some degree, this evaluation has been part of that. But I must say, in working with the resort officials and our staff and the council members over the past month or so, really a little bit longer than that, it's been a very amicable and a very cooperative discussion, and I think we'll see tonight, as we go through this discussion, some major changes and opportunities that have come along, both for the resort and for the village. So we continue to do our due diligence as we will continue with the meeting. I wanted to highlight a few things that we talked about, some in detail and some not so much tonight, but it's critical that we in the council and the resort convey to the public where we've come with this document over the past 30 days or so. And I would just draw attention to some, but not all, of the conditions that will be talked about in a little more detail, so that as we do that, you all have a framework for the importance of those. I would, we're going to go over the 11 conditions through the evening, but I would draw attention to a couple of those that drew input and questions from the council and certainly from residents over the past few weeks. First of all, to the lodge building itself, at the initiative of the resort, the so-called player dining and flex space, a large room that was initially planned in the building, has been taken away, removed from consideration at the initiative of the resort itself. Secondly, in a more practical but important management issue for the village, all the stormwater management on the property will be accommodated to a 25-year storm event, which is a much more strict standard than many, than our ordinance is calling for, and many of our other construction projects have not met. Item Number Six, Condition Number Six, which was suggested through the Planning and Zoning Board, that we continue to preserve two specimen trees on either side of the proposed emergency fire access. That's a condition that the resort will try to abide by at all possibilities. Condition Number Seven, Eight, and Nine, and Ten get into some very important discussions about parking. So I want you to be aware that the resort and the village will be entering into a development agreement that will provide the required parking spaces as outlined in Conditions Eight, Nine, and Ten. A letter of intent defining the general terms of the development agreement will be required to be approved by the village council prior to issuance of building and development permits for the proposed lodge. In Condition Number Eight, we speak specifically about parking issues on the campus. The resort will provide 125 additional standard-sized parking spaces on the resort main campus. This number will be adjusted for seating of a lobby bar and some other possible changes over time, but nevertheless, a very significant addition to parking will be added on the site. The 125 new spaces will be accommodated with by-surface parking, parking decks, or tiered parking, as some of us call it, or other means on the subject property as determined by the applicant. However, the village of Pinehurst prefers a leveled or below-ground, above-ground approach to the structure in the front of the lodge versus the use of additional open space. Condition Number Nine, the resort will provide a minimum of 100 parking spaces to run. These parking spaces are to be provided at the greenhouse property owned by the resort and will be subject outlined and will be approved by the village of Pinehurst once designed. And I think we may hear a little bit more about that tonight. And item number 10, condition number 10, is that the resort is going to, within the next several months, a year probably, add to the parking capacity at the Carolina Hotel with the adoption of about 86 new spaces in two or three different places, including the existing parking lots. And finally, condition item number 11, there'll be a plan for managing onsite temporary parking and internal overflow parking for special events that the resort will come up with and present to the village for discussion. So those are highlights of the main conditions that the resort and the village have been negotiating over the past several weeks and will have some further discussion on those tonight. But just wanted to highlight those because they are important, that you understand the amount of work and the ingenuity, both on the part of the resort, but also the village staff and the village council. At that point, at this point, I think I'll turn the meeting over to Jeff Sanborn and in turn, I believe, to Darren. Jeff?
Thanks, John. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Darren, who will give, provide a brief summary of the project and I think he intends also to highlight some of the changes that have taken place since the last meeting.
Sure, thank you. And I think the mayor did a good job of doing that already, so. But now you'll be able to see it on the screen.
We had discussed that in advance. It's no surprise.
All right. Tonight, we're here to discuss and consider ordinance number 2107, which is a zoning amendment for three properties on the main PCC campus site and what the proposal is to change that to a hotel and conditional district as we've been discussing for the last few minutes. The request includes development of a 64,000-square-foot structure, including a 34-room lodge, lobby space, physio, lab, locker room, boardroom and bar. Here is a combined concept plan, which shows both the USGA-proposed golf hall site, which we'll be discussing, there will be a public hearing held on July 1st at the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as the proposed lodge right down here. Just some renderings, these are some renderings that have been viewed before as part of the HPC council and P&amp;Z public hearings. Last was the backside. This is the front side as you're coming up Carolina Vista. So the updated information that we've had and the mayor's gone over a little bit since the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on the 21st was there have been a number of changes that have been made to the original concept. Some conditions have been added, some conditions have been modified. The first one that I've listed on the site is PRCC has removed the flex and dining space to enlarge and improve player locker room experience. That is condition number four. PRCC has agreed to create an additional 125 parking spaces, which this number does include 12 spaces displaced in the main parking lot. Surface or level structure, of course, the village prefers a leveled type structure. The net gain on this is about 113, which is related to the lodge or not the USGA. PRCC to provide a minimum of 100 parking spaces at the greenhouse property. That's condition number nine. And that really relates to the shuttle dislocation that will occur as part of the USGA project. PRCC to add parking spaces at the Carolina. That's about 86 and that's condition number 10. Stormwater, another major agreement, stormwater to be designed to accommodate the 25-year storm event. That's condition number five. And then just to provide and show us a plan that you thought about how to manage temporary overflow and event parking. That's really taking a look, where can we park? If there was an event, then we need to park some additional vehicles on the site. Where can we on the campus, on that main campus, provide that or offsite? The condition, the PDO modifications that have been requested, these are the modifications to the underlying requirements of the PDO. There are a few that were requested as part of this project. One, the maximum building height of 55 feet. There was an add for a maximum length of 50 feet from the east elevation. That's condition one. And that gets at the peak, I think it's the roof line near above the rooftop bar on the east side of the elevation. The building steps down as you go to the west a little bit. Setbacks, 40 feet minimum, front, east side, 20 feet minimum. And this is where there's a real change here, west 30. The base requirement is actually 20. They've increased it to 30, so that's a less restrictive setback, or more restrictive setback, sorry. And rear yard, yeah, zero foot rear yard minimum. They have plenty of room to the south, so that doesn't really come into play. Increase allowed signage by size and amount, 50% of the north and east side elevations. Nothing's really changed since the P&amp;Z on that meeting. Efforts to preserve the two specimen trees along the fire access, condition number six. And then enter into the development agreement to provide parking required. That LOI, which kind of sets the terms for that development agreement to be accepted, has to be approved prior to issuance of a building and development permit. They can apply, they can be reviewed, so it can follow the normal review process. We just have to have the LOI approved by a village council prior to us actually issuing that building permit. The timelines, a couple of the timelines that we're looking at, the letter of intent before permit issuance for the lodge, I think, I think right now, just some talks with the applicant as we're looking, or maybe next spring to actually get the building permit issued. So it still has to go through review, it still has to be designed, but I think they were looking at that. The development agreement, this one, we're going to have to have some discussion on because there's something, something got changed in the ordinance when we set it up and I put it in the system. But right now, that condition about the development agreement states 123121. So what the condition is stating is we want the development agreement done before the building permit is issued. That then takes out the LOI. So the request is to move that back. And one, I think that the applicant's original request was 123123. I think that was getting a little bit too close to occupancy of the lodge. So what I think staff and what the applicant has requested is to change the agreement timeframe to having the development agreement approved one year after building permit issuance for the lodge. That means once, it gives them a little bit more time or it doesn't, it doesn't put a hard deadline in because they don't know when the actual permit is going to be issued for the lodge. But what it does is it puts an end date on when the development agreement has to be done. So that one year should provide plenty of time for us to develop that development agreement. The terms will be set with that LOI. So it's really working out the individual details of that, of the development agreement. The 125 parking spaces on the main campus, that's structured or surface, that's within one year of issuance of CO for a lodge. And that's really, and that's, that particular condition or that request is why we really went with that development agreement because we're requiring the development agreement because the parking spaces are occurring after occupancy of the lodge. And the development agreement will set the timeframe for when that needs to be done. It will have breach of contract things that are included in it, things like that, and set the expectation of when it needs to be done, when plans have to be submitted. This is the greenhouse lot parking to be created prior to issuance of a CO for the lodge. And this, in this particular condition that's being included on the lodge, and we may have to include it on the USGA as well, is because the parking that's being displaced, is really being displaced for the lodge project. And then, or I mean, you're right, for the USGA projects, thanks, Trudy. And then Carolina's surface parking created by issuance of, before issuance of a CO for the lodge. And then conditions, and I can, I'll pull back right now because I have each condition listed on the slide that we can go over as needed after we have discussion with the applicant or any other questions.
So that'll conclude the initial comments from staff. At this point, we would ask the applicant to please come forward and give us any other updates or questions that you have with respect to the proposed conditions. And once again, if you'd give us your full names and positions, please.
I'm Tom Paschley, president, Pinehurst Resort and Country Club.
Dick Higginbotham, CFO, Pinehurst Resort and Country Club.
Welcome both of you and all the others from the management team and development team that are here tonight.
You guys have done such a great job of summarizing it. I'm going to cut part of my presentation and make this as quickly as possible. Coming out of the last meeting, it was clear there were three specific things to do. First and foremost is the revisions to the conditions that have been outlined. Two, come up with additional parking support, trying to support the PDO against the recommended parking levels that we've established. In other words, try and true up our numbers. And third, address some of the other issues, including separating municipal and business concerns. I'm not going to talk a lot about the conditions because I think we're about to do that here in a minute. But I am going to point out one thing on the conditions. Personally, I'm thrilled with condition number 11. It wasn't our idea, I will admit that. And it does put us back in front of you all again before the year is out. But it's something that really we should be doing. If we accept the fact that what Gil Baines talked about during their presentation about neighborhood communication and how important it is, we should be more than willing to sit down in front of you all and outline further what our plans are. So I look forward to that. My guess is it will be before July 1st, 2022. I think it needs to be before that. I think it needs to be a summary of what we're going to do during construction and things like that. So don't be surprised if you see us before that date. But personally, I'm thrilled with that, even though, like I said, it does put me back in the seats again. We've talked a lot about the individual parking spaces. I have a feeling we're going to get to those here in a minute, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time discussing those, even though they are on my list. The next topic we discussed was the PDO parking necessity and trying to balance out where we are. This exercise where we worked with the village staff closely and, and folks, I give all the credit in the world to the staff. The staff is tremendous. But as expected, we came up with several different answers to our question. What we assumed was going to be a pure math issue turned into an interpretive one, as we expected. In general, though, I think the applicant firmly believes that what it showed was we will not be underparked once we address all the conditions here. In addition to not being underparked, we are going to be providing a large amount of ancillary parking on other campuses. We can certainly debate some of the numbers and we could debate some of the assumptions and I get that. But at the end of the day, I think the exercise was fruitful. I think it was very interesting and it was very interesting to see the various conclusions. The last thing I do want to point out, though, is, and this is an important point, we have relieved, I hope, some of council's concerns and some of the citizens' concerns with parking on our various campuses. We will continue to do that. I think first and foremost, everyone has to understand that the resort looks at this as a first step, not a final step. There is more coming relative to parking, more coming relative to other things that we need to be involved with. And I hope you'll be excited by the time, you know, like I said, next time we're in front of you, when we are rolling out some of the plans for the greenhouse, rolling out the, you know, announcing that the Carolina parking's open and things like that. I will point out that relative to the conditions, the conditions on both the greenhouse lot and the Carolina lot, say before CO issuance of the building, you have my commitment that those both will be done before we start construction. Because I think that's critical to resolving parking issues as we're going through construction. My last comment is on the topic I thought was interesting that came up about municipal versus business concerns and whether the concerns that we're seeing for parking were municipal concerns. Obviously, I would have an opinion on that subject. Obviously, so would you. But let's just let those opinions stay where they are for right now and let me say this. Though I won't say I've enjoyed all of our discussions, I will clearly state for the record that as a major part of the community, the resort has a unique and probably more allied relationship with the village than many other entities. We need more of that honest and open communication that Gil Baines talked about early on in this process between council and between resort leaders. Each of us needs to understand that our goal in a situation like this should always be to create win-win situations for the village, the resort, our members and the citizens of this great village. Our goal should always be to maintain a spirit that drives that wonderful phrase, "It is a beautiful day at Pinehurst." Like I said, that is my shorter version of my comments. I thank you for your time and attention relative to these matters. We are happy to answer any questions you might have relative to what you're going to see or have seen. And the only question is whether we want to go to Tom's comments first or whether we want to go to the review of the conditions first.
How would the applicant wish to proceed? Would you like to go into the details first, Tom, and then?
No, I think, yeah, I think we go into the details.
Okay. Please do, Dick. And Dick, as you do that, thank you for your helpful comments there and we certainly share your goals and aspirations as you've expressed them for all of our village residents and stakeholders. And that's what these discussions are all about in the end. I have one or two questions of my own, and these are just sort of clarifying what you've either said tonight or in the past, going right to one of the, one of the parking issues. If it is that this tiered or decked idea for parking on the lodge, the resort campus happens, my understanding, and I think the drawings call for it, but just to confirm, would be that if you were to do that, it would be where the existing parking lot is today, correct? It would be a conjunction with that space. It's not moved to a slightly different location. Is that your plan?
It could either move north or south on that space. It could not move east or west. How about that?
That's a good way to say it, yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't be much one way or the other.
Right.
Okay, fine. That clarifies that. I think the, well, I think the issue that has to do with the date in condition number seven might be the best place to start because that's something that's come up in the last 24 hours. There'll be other comments on different conditions as we go forward here, but maybe we ought to focus on that for a minute and try to make everybody, clarify that for everyone. Darren spoke to it a little bit and you have. So Darren, let's quickly then review what, this is, of course, condition number seven. It has to do with the date of December 31st, 2021. Let's go over that in a little bit detail and then get some feedback from the resort about how they'd like to discuss that.
Correct. We noticed this today when we were having some discussions with the applicant, that they had actually requested 123123. I think Jeff, you'd remembered that. When we prepared the ordinance, for some reason, we got, we put the 21 date in there. I don't know how it got in there. It was a mistake. It got noticed today. So I did reach out to the applicant because there was some, well, I had concern that we weren't going to be able to meet that date, given that they weren't going to be in construction by then. So I had reached out to them or we'd started to talk about ideas, when we could make that development agreement, what would be a good date? And getting a date, a final date, was a little bit difficult, given that we didn't know when they were action and get their building permit issued. And we wanted them focusing on getting their building permit issued and everything related around that, because there's a lot of work that goes into getting that permit issued. So we came up with the idea of tying it to the issuance of the, tie date to the issuance of building permit. We had originally thought potentially six months or a year. Talked a little bit with Dick a little bit on it and they're comfortable with about one year after issuance of a building permit. It's a date certain. It gives them, it gives them enough, gives us all enough time to negotiate that out. And it's really, you know, the letter of intent is going to set those general terms, but it's really becomes the fine new details that we're going to have to work on over the course of a year's worth of time. We also have to take that to a public hearing, so we have to keep that in mind. So we think the one year is doable. And when we were talking about it, the real consequence of the, of the agreement itself is, and the reason why we're doing it is because the parking that's required by the conditional zoning and the reason why we're doing it is because the parking that's required by the conditional zoning is coming afterwards. So we want to make sure that we have all those, after the lodge is constructed, after they have their CO, we didn't want to tie anything to the CO because we didn't want to pull back a CO. So we thought the most logical thing to do was just to have a development agreement that sets all the terms and conditions for when that parking is going to come in. We also potentially can pull in some of the other parking. But as Dick said tonight, I think they're going to accomplish, they'll probably have all the, most of the other parking accomplished prior to, prior to their construction. So some of those things can probably drop out of the development permit or the development agreement.
Well, when this came up, I began to think through sort of three items that are contained in this condition number seven. Help, help me, help us understand. We have a letter of intent. We have permits and we have a development agreement. Now, which comes first in your, is your understanding of this, the chicken or the egg, so to speak? And because some of that thinking in my own mind changed this afternoon when we were talking about that. Go ahead.
The LOI will come first. Well, really, what comes first are the conditions. The conditions that if we get approved this evening, if we approve the ordinance this evening, those conditions will set some of the general terms for that LOI.
Right.
That LOI then will occur and will come back to council prior to actual permit issuance for the lodge, for lodge's construction. So it's this tonight, it's conditions, LOI, building permit issuance, and then development agreement.
There is, there's some logic to that framework as well. I bring everybody's attention back to the possibility, we don't know what's going to happen, but the possibility that that 125 number might grow based on the actual design specifications of this lodge. So we don't know, we can't enter into an LOI about what that's going to look like and how many, how large the facility is going to be now. We have to wait until we get those further details from the applicant. Now, does that mean that we have to wait all the way until issuance of the building permits? I don't know, maybe not. Certainly, there's going to be some point in time when we're going to know enough about the intended building through the review process that we might be able to get it done ahead of time. By how much, I don't know. But I think by saying prior to issuance of the building permit, it makes it very clean. Trigger for us.
Right. So are we looking then to set a specific date here or then just a timeframe? As I think you were just identifying, Jeff, a certain number of months after.
Yeah, well, I was speaking particularly about the LOI, not the, not the actual development agreement. Development agreement has, has to come after the LOI. So if you, if you accept the logic that the LOIs should be maybe timed to the issuance of building permits, then at some point in the future beyond that, we, you know, allowing time for negotiations of what the final contractual language is going to look like. And it needs to be after that time. We've had some dialogue this earlier day about whether a year is right or six months is right or some other timeframe, but.
When did you say the building permits probably would be issued? You said July of next year?
I think March, April, potentially.
Now, as that process is ongoing, do the terms of the LOI become more
visible, more clear? Right, LOI right now just tells when we're going to enter into an agreement. And I know there's a whole lot more process that we have to undergo. As we undergo that process, will the terms of the LOI become more settled, defined?
More concrete from the, from the conditions that are proved. So we'll, we'll take the conditions that are proved, that are potentially being approved. And we'll use those conditions and we'll use those as the, as the applicable ones, the germane ones. We'll include those in the development agreement. So we'll just firm those up and put a little bit more language associated with them to make them more concrete and clear.
But if this ordinance is passed, if it's adopted tonight, they begin their engineering, they begin, I mean, this is just a concept plan. So this pulls the trigger for them to continue to develop that building. And as they develop the building, they get to the point of permits. And so I guess I'm asking my question just slightly differently. As they begin that process, then we will know more about what goes into an LOI, correct?
Yes.
And then what goes into the LOI eventually will find its way into the development agreement.
Correct. That is correct.
So if the permits are issued in March, what's a reasonable timeframe before that that we would want to have the LOI? I mean, in that, we're talking timelines, right?
I don't know that you could.
Well, the second.
Say before, a certain number of months before the issuance of building permits, though, because you don't know when it's going to issue. That's why I think it's clean. It's just a trigger, say before the issuance of building permits.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, but I'm wondering, does it make sense to say a month before that? Or, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the second sentence right now reads that the LOI is going to be developed prior to the issuance of the building and development permits. Which might be on or about March or April of next year.
Sometime before that we will have our law.
The final agreement date is the thing that we're looking for now.
It might come in earlier, might come in a month earlier, might come in two months earlier.
Okay, so it does make sense to say that the LOI would be done a month before the permit. Okay, okay.
They don't have permits. They're not going to be doing work.
Oh, I know.
So it doesn't matter. As long as, as long as we do the letter of intent before we issue the permits, we're good.
And that's what I understand. I just didn't know if it made, as we're trying to look at timelines, I didn't know if it made sense to try to set a specific timeline for the LOI.
Yeah.
It's just before the building permits, building and.
Can we make a comment here? Number one, I do want to make sure that we understand that, and we have had this conversation with staff as well. We're fine with the first part. I mean, the LOI and that language, the applicant accepts fully. And we think it works for everybody involved. It also gives us enough time to complete the Carolina, complete the greenhouse. So they would then not have to be part of an LOI, which makes the LOI process even cleaner, I would think. The only stipulation we want to put out there, and we've made clear to staff, is this is going to be a big project to review. So we fully understand that permits cannot be issued until the LOI is complete. That's fine. We do need to be continuing though the process all the way through up until that particular event occurs in order to achieve the timeline. So staff will still have to be reviewing, will still have to be beginning the engineering work done and all those other things done through staff. We're just all in agreement that says the final permits cannot be issued until that's done. The, the major concern obviously is the 123121 date puts the one before the other, puts the cart before the horse. We have to look at that.
Well, let's talk about that because that language, I'm just trying to start something. If you cross out prior to 123121, replace it with one year after a building permit for lodge or six months, you know, whatever. I think that modifies seven to some degree. Can you give us some input on which, which works? Because I'm a little unsure if six months is enough or, Darren, do you have some thoughts?
I thought Darren had a specific idea, or Jane, yeah.
Specific questions about, about this very point.
Okay.
And, and that is, I'd like to understand a little bit better what's going in the development agreement. Is it just the parking terms? Or is it going to be other issues having to do with the building?
It has, the whole thing is being treated by the parking requirement.
Okay.
And particularly the delayed parking. And it's very, you're making a very good point here. That's where, I think initially when we talked about this development agreement and the associated LOI, we were talking about all three of these parking situations. But what we just heard from the applicants was that they intend to take care of the Carolina parking and the greenhouse parking before, ahead of time. So now we're really just talking about the 125 spaces or maybe a little more than 125 spaces that are, that won't be constructed, construction won't begin until summer of 2024. So by allowing them a year, we don't really, we're not suffering anything.
I'm very comfortable with a year myself. I just wanted to, I'm checking temperatures here.
Well, we don't lose anything, I don't think.
So my next, my next question is, how detailed is the letter of intent compared to the development agreement? And I guess by detailed, I don't mean the boilerplate terms. I mean, the, the big chunky terms. Is it, how firm is it going to be? Because if that letter of intent really, you know, in a, in an outline form, but really lays it out, this is how many spaces they're going to be, this is where they're going to go on the site. And I would imagine that in order to get from sitting here tonight to being prepared to file an application for the construction permit for the lodge, for the building permit itself, that, that the work of figuring out what that onsite parking is going to look like and where it's going to go will have been crunched along with finalizing the plans for the building itself. And certainly in order to put the letter of intent together. So what is left to draft other than boilerplate template?
It's legal language. Turning in, it's turning general terms of agreement into legally
Okay.
substantial language.
But that, if you think in terms of a contract that you would make with an architect to build a building for you or in terms of a contract to sell some property or, or other kinds of contracts, you don't need a year to draft your, your contract. So.
I agree, I agree with that.
And if it goes on too long, it gets stale.
Point that we don't really, we don't, we don't gain anything by doing it earlier and we don't, we're not losing anything by allowing the year, I don't think. Because it's all about that, those 125 spaces and where they go.
And I think you also have to appreciate the gymnastics that are going on during this time period. I mean, it's not, it's not like this is the only thing to consider. They're building the lodge, they're figuring out all the use of the resources they have on their main campus now. And there's a lot, and then you're getting ready for the US Open to come here. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts. And I think that, yes, the letter of intent can generally define the terms. But, you know, you will probably need some time to get into that development agreement.
Yeah, I would interject to giving more time, we get a better product probably as well.
I would agree with that.
And I think we all want a better product. So I think it's to our advantage.
Now, applicant does have a question here because of something that was said. The development agreement, sorry, I'm an accountant, so I'll say it harshly, isn't, is going to be real easy from the happy side. The harder part is going to be the sad side. I mean, that's where, obviously where all these contracts come up is, isn't where if everything goes right, what happens? It's what happens if something goes wrong. And so I will stress, that is where the discussion is probably going to occur. I mean, it's, it's, it's that unlikely situation that something goes wrong. And so the more time we have, the better off we are to make sure everybody's comfortable with those. And please don't think that I'm predicting something's going to go wrong, but that's just the way lawyers, that's the way lawyers think. I'm finding that out more and more.
Right.
No offense meant to the lawyers in the room. Second of all, the development agreement is going to talk about the goods and the bads. It's not necessarily going to talk about where parking is yet. So I want to stress that for several reasons. Number one, I, and again, maybe this is a question of staff, I don't think that you all can approve anything that far out and have it be binding. So I don't think you could approve a building and, because historical, for example, has a limited approval time. We have to start construction. Right. We have to, so the further out we go one direction, the less likely we are to be able to present to you certain other information because we're not going to be able to get it approved and have that approval hold. Now, I think those are dates we have to go through and I'm certainly not the experts. The experts are sitting back here on dates and approvals and things like that, or actually probably over here. But I want to stress, the development agreement is talking about what happens, what has to happen and what happens if it doesn't happen. That's all it should be designed to talk about. We will come in front of you again, because there's another date on here and we get the other condition that says when we have to present the plans to you for a physical, the final design.
Darren, do you have a comment on that or is there a specific change of language that you would recommend here?
No, I think, well, Kevin had started to raise it by deleting out the 123121 and adding approved by the village within.
Well, I deleted prior to 123121 and after village, it says approved by the village one year after building permit for lodge. It's a real simple change. Eliminate prior to 123121, replace it with one year after building permit for lodge. One year after building permit, I guess is a better way. It's just about the lodge.
Jeff, is that acceptable to you? Is that your understanding?
Certainly, yeah.
Darren, do the council members have a question on that particular change?
Yeah, just following up on what Kevin said and Dick, you too, I mean, you had told us how this parking, you guys are learning so much about your parking. And it seems like if we give you the year, it's like Kevin said, you will, you will know more a year after building permits than you do six months. So whatever we come up with will be built on better knowledge than you were forced to get in a six-month period of time.
Correct. I'm quite comfortable with that statement. And I want to stress, this is the outside limits. I mean, it is quite possible. I mean, I would hope we're all setting the outside guidelines and we're all hoping that we can get inside all of these dates. I mean, no one wants to be presenting this to you 11 months, 21 days, you know, after issuance and having these discussions. So I think we have to just understand that these are kind of the outer limits. And we all might be focused on getting them done as quickly as possible.
Jane, do you still have a trouble look on that solution?
Well, I think a year is unnecessarily long, but as Jeff said, I
Okay.
I guess it won't.
Okay. Is there a consensus in the council then to make this amendment? Does the clerk have the language for the amendment? And Darren, do you have the language for that amendment? Okay. Kevin, thank you for that. So I think we've closed the discussion or we should move on to another condition on number seven. Do you have any other questions on condition number seven? Anybody?
No.
All right. Darren, let's move on to another condition.
Is there any particular condition you want to go over this way?
Well, why don't we kind of just, you had summarized, I think, up through, well, got us to number seven, I believe. We talked about the earlier ones.
Well, we went right to seven because that was the only disputed one.
For all, it won't take but.
Yeah.
Well, I think there are going to be questions on, you know, eight, nine, 10, 11. We have 11 settled, I think.
If we can make it easier, just so that everyone's clear on this, the applicant accepts the other 10 as written. So we don't have any questions on them from that standpoint. We're happy to answer your questions, but we're comfortable with them.
So you have no further changes to recommend tonight on any of the conditions, except for what we just did to number seven? Okay? All right. Judy, are you about to speak or did I?
No, I was just, I mean, one of the things on condition 10, one of the things that you mentioned, and we could change this, is that improvements are subject to, in that second bullet, improvements are subject to compliance with the village's PDO and ESSM and shall be constructed prior to the beginning of the lodge construction.
I'm sorry, Judy, where were you reading from, please?
The second bullet.
Second bullet.
Number 10.
And condition 10, make sure everybody's on the same page, literally.
Last part says and shall be constructed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the lodge. And what they're saying is that they're going to be finished before they begin construction. So we could just change that language as well. And shall be constructed prior to the, to the beginning of the lodge construction.
It's very similar, but different, but okay.
I don't understand, Judy.
A CO is very different from the beginning of, that's at the end of the process.
Occupancy, okay.
Yeah.
Be constructive prior to.
That's when you get to move in.
Mutually agree.
Judy, I don't understand, I don't understand what you're proposing.
So this language now says that the, has to be finished prior to them getting the CO to occupy the lodge, move in, take guests.
2023 or so.
Yeah. And now I'm saying, and now what they've offered tonight is that they will do this prior to when construction begins.
Okay.
Which is sometime next summer.
Can I jump in just before we go a little bit further? The concern on that is we have not, we've not reviewed. The concern on that is, we have not, we've not reviewed any of the plans yet. We've only seen things in concept, so we've not gone through a review, and that's why I put that language in there about compliance with the PDO and ESSM, because we've not done a, an in-depth zoning review on that. We're comfortable, that language, it's an outside language. We know that, we know that they want to get that done ahead of time, but to put a date on there, unless you want to put another year date on that, or something like that, like, like we've, like we've proposed to change with the development agreement, that could be something that, that would move that timeframe up, given the fact that there are, they already want to plan to move that ahead.
Well, I, I think these are really obvious milestones. I mean, the obvious milestone in condition number seven is, is the issuance of the building permit. I mean, we'll be very involved and know where they are, and I, I think delaying it to that time, so, yeah, we could, yeah, they'll beat it, but, you know, everybody should be looking at this as a planning document as well.
Again, the only concern that I have is the amount of time it may take us to review it, the amount of time that, we, we don't know if they're in compliance or out of compliance with various, you know, with the setbacks, aisle sizes, anything. I'm just, that's, that's my only concern at a staff level.
And at a staff level, I'd say we should just, it's to our advantage for our citizens to have them achieve this as early as possible, and we should support it.
Darren, they had offered to do this by the end of the year, but now you're saying the staffing requirements are going to, that was a nice offer on their part, but it's going to take staff longer to do this. And I agree with Judy, to do, to wait that long seems a little long. Is there, can, can we get a better estimate from staff as to how long?
We have to have a submission first before I can give you an estimate. If it comes in, I'm going to tell you it's going to take 60 days probably to, to get it reviewed through TRC and to, to construction level. I don't know, we haven't talked recently with, with the applicant. The applicant's probably better, can better address when they're thinking about making the submission to us.
I'm doing the math.
I'm looking at your writing here. I'm not looking, I see you're calculating something, yeah.
So I hear this correctly, Darren, that language is there for you more than applicant, or?
No, it's, it really relates back to, it gives them enough flexibility to make sure that, it gives everybody the flexibility to be, that, that those, those improvements will be constructed prior to occupancy of the lodge.
Just plain devil's advocate, if we change the language, what Judy said, don't we have the right to change it? We didn't need the timeline? I mean, we are partners, I mean, we could, if, if something happens that delays it, that staff delays it, we could extend it.
There is that language that I, that I do like, unless mutually extended, or I think we put that language open somewhere, unless extended by council.
Or unless extended in the letter of intent, which will be coming out ahead of the building permit.
Right. The one thing I want to point out is anything we decide probably also has to affect the greenhouse, so I, so I'm going to give you some dates just to throw this out. We're farther along on the Carolina than we are on the greenhouse, because of obvious reasons, we'd started the Carolina before. Most likely, staff will get the Carolina final drawings in two months. My guess is it'll take three months, another month to finish off the greenhouse, so we'll just basically say all of that would be in three months. If it takes two months then to review, we're talking about five months. As I remember it, it's June now, so we're talking about November. Now we enter into the timeframe where can we or can't we get asphalt. So that becomes then a problem, because obviously the asphalt plants will close at some point or slow down, depending on weather. And then, you know, you then get pushed back until later on. So, so, so there is a reason to be cautious about this, and again, I don't want to have the lodge stop because those lots aren't done. If that's, if it's not done, isn't up to us. So we have to keep that in mind.
Keep it in a warm season.
Yeah.
Maybe there's an answer, maybe there's wording that, with the intent of doing it before the permit.
I almost hesitate to go here, but do you have a sense for what timeline the USGA facilities will be on with regard to starting construction?
They will be later than us by at least two months, would that be fair?
As I think about the real impact, I mean, the most significant impact during construction is going to be the loss of the, the shuttle and overflow parking area there, which isn't about when the lodge is beginning construction, it's about when the USGA facility start construction. So if that buys some more time, I don't know if it's appropriate to put language in this zoning approval that ties to a different development approval, but...
What if we said July 1, 2022? We've got that date in there for something else, for the...
For revisiting.
Yeah, for the, so what if we tied it to that? That, that, that gives us time to get back into spring if we miss the asphalt season.
Like, I like that, if they, if, if they like it, Darren likes it.
And if, if, if it needs to be kicked back further because of the asphalt, the whatever, how do we deal with that?
We should add language now.
Well, if, if July, if the July 1 date comes up, that's not going to be an issue, because you would be approved, if we submit as scheduled, it would be approved in, let's say, December or so, and then once the asphalt plant's open, we would simply do it.
July solves it for you.
So July works, July works, July 22 works for us.
If there were a practical problem, it could be addressed in the letter of intent.
I appreciate you doing that. That solves it for me, and Judy.
That's fine.
Council's okay with that? July 1, 2022?
Yeah, this, it's just more near term and realistic.
July 1, 2022, is that what we said?
Yeah.
Any questions from the village's clerk on that? You have?
Yes, yes.
Darren, you're all set with that also, right? Okay.
Friday, July 1.
Now, we're on condition number 10. Darren, are there other points you wish to make? I think council may have some questions on that. Okay, sorry?
We're on nine.
No, this is 10.
No, this was 10.
We did 10.
Yeah, we'll get to nine, yeah. Since we're on 10, let's carry on with any other questions that you may have. Any, any other points you want to make on condition 10, Darren?
No, sir.
Just doing that today.
All right. Are there questions from council for the applicant or staff with respect to condition number 10?
No.
Which one?
Condition number 10.
10, no, I don't have any.
It's the same comment, right?
Sorry?
Condition number 10 would be the same, the same change.
Condition...
That, that was condition number 10.
That's the one we were talking about.
That was part of 10, yeah.
That was 10.
It's this final paragraph.
Nine will be the same date.
Nine will be the same as 10, I'm sorry.
Nine will be the same as 10. Right?
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
Nine and 10.
I appreciate that.
All right, so condition number 10, though, are there any other questions or clarifications desired from the applicant on that condition? None, all right?
The one other thing which isn't really a condition, it was in my notes, but I do want to point out, the applicant does intend to move forward with a Barrett Road plan as well and bring it forward. Now, I want to stress, everybody saw the curve and everything else, let's just understand that was a proof of concept, that really wasn't a true drawing, so we're going to take a harder look at this as well. And again, all we're saying is we're going to present it sometime in the fall. It will probably be revised from what you saw, but that's out there, so.
Okay, great.
But that's unrelated to this, that's...
This is unrelated to this.
Related to the incentive agreement, which states, whereas in addition, separate from this agreement, the Piner's Resort and the Village each agree that they will continue in good faith to attempt to negotiate a separate agreement to address long-term parking needs to Carolina Hotels. So that's not in this agreement, but, but it's, I'm glad you brought it up, because when you combine this with that, I mean, that's what, that's what, it's, it's a powerful step forward.
Right. That was just for clarification, that's all that was.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to another condition. While we move up to number nine, we just referenced that. Darren, any comments on number nine here? This is how it reads at the current time, right?
Change of...
And you want to make the date?
July 1, 2022 will be added as...
Where, where do you want to insert that, Darren?
At the very end.
Parking spaces shall be constructed prior to July 1, 2022, to get rid of issuance of...
Amortum changes on number 10.
Name is 10, yeah.
Any questions from staff on that? Any questions from council on condition number nine? Jane?
So I just want to make sure, again, I have my, my timing. When is the lodge going to, because we're going to, we're going to need that replacement parking when the lodge gets, gets going, actually, when the USGA gets going. So when is the USGA going to be starting up, do we think?
I don't speak for the USGA, but I would say somewhere between two and three months after the lodge. Their construction time is less than ours. What, ours would be hopefully April, May, so we would be within the timeframe.
Okay, is, is there going to be a gap when the greenhouse parking isn't ready, but the USGA area is no longer available for the vans and the employee parking?
It is my intent to be the answer to that, to be no. That is my intent. I, I would just assume have them all constructed as quickly as possible.
What would, what, what would be Plan B in the worst-case scenario here?
Plan B would probably be to move the shuttles out to number eight.
To number eight, to the number eight course.
Right, where, where we have excess land for the short term.
That's enough motivation to get it done right there.
Yeah, that's enough motivation to get it done, yeah.
And at the greenhouse spot, that lot, we've seen, we've seen the little, I don't know if it's, if it's in the, a, a, a little diagram showing that you could, you know, chicklets in a box, parking spaces, you could get 120. But are those all regular car spaces, or are some of those van spaces? Are vans and shuttles the same thing? On, on the one parking analysis that we got from Mr. Coons indicated 32 shuttles, so is that going to take up 32 of those 120 spaces? Or will that greenhouse lot hold 120 spaces plus 32 spaces? Or how does that work?
Okay, well, first off, I'll say this, the, the condition says 100, and you're right, initially, we started with 120. We did reduce that based on certain criteria, again, as, as Darren has stressed. It's great to come up with a number of proof of concept, but we still have to get it past staff and make sure it's still compliant and everything else. So this has been lowered. It also does say a minimum, so whereas the other ones kind of are firm numbers, this one says a minimum, because we will build as much parking as we need. We were kind of aware of this, so let me use the numbers, 28 of the 32 shuttles use regular parking spaces.
Okay.
Or do not. As we talk about a minimum of other spaces, very well, when you get the final plan, you might see a plan that has specific parking for the large trolley, as well as for the three other vans. And again, that would be our goal. This is a minimum of 100, that's what we've committed to. We've already proven it could support up to 120, it's going to be somewhere in between that number, so we will net out 100 spaces in the end.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on number, condition nine? Darren, you're comfortable? We'll move on. Condition number eight. I think this one's pretty stable, Darren, there's nothing...
Nothing, no. The 125, that was the one that was agreed to, then we added the language regarding the leveled or surface and the preference for the leveled.
Right, and I had asked Dick earlier about the positioning of the parking in front of the lodge, if it becomes a tiered where it is, you clarified that from my point of view. Any other questions on condition number eight from council members? Going backwards, worked pretty well, didn't it? Number seven, we did that. Six, no question, I believe, and going all the way back through to one, any other questions from staff or on, on conditions one through five? Let's put it that way, Darren.
Those, and those were the, those were the, most of the conditions that we came into it, well, some that we came into it, so, no, there was no questions.
Darren, is there any other input that you have for us tonight on this application? Are there any other comments from the applicant?
None.
Are there any comments from the village council further? Jane?
This is, this is just a request, but what would the removal of the player dining flex space, if as you're finalizing the building plans, you have an opportunity for your architect to work some magic and reduce the building mass that, that would be very much appreciated?
Are there...
Oh, I thought, just, you, okay. I thought there was another question coming on that, yes, I understand that, okay.
No, I think the issue, it's on the minds of some of us on the council of going back to meeting number one, and we talked about architecture, and we talked about parking, and we talked about all the things that have come around, and the points were made at that time about scale and mass, you understand that. I think the question is, now that there's a little bit less space being required in the building, although I understand how you want to use it, if the shape of the building, the look of the building, especially from the south side, can be amended at all with respect to mass, that would be something I think would be attractive to a number of constituencies. All right. Are there any general comments about the application that members of the village council would like to make? Lydia?
I would, I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this project from the very start, and this is my brain on this project, this is my record. I mean, you know, for me, this goes back to when we did the incentive agreement, we started getting information on this, and then P&amp;Z heard it, and HPC heard it, and I have accumulated everything that's gone into my brain, this is my record of this case. And I've summarized it into a little two-page outline for why I support this project, and if, so if anybody wants to talk to me about why I'm supporting it, I'll give you this, I'll talk, talk with you through it, but I can't stress enough how much time has been spent, not only with our planning and zoning and HPC and council, but staff has put in so much time, and I think Dick used words amicable and cooperative or whatever. To me, it seemed like you guys have been extremely cooperative with our staff, and staff has been great with you guys. So it's been a thorough process, a thoughtful process. We recognize it's not going to make everybody 100% happy, but I think we've all done our due diligence on this. So that's what I have to say, and I do. I have this little two-page outline, if anybody would like to see what's in my brain, the summary of my brain on this.
I, I want to summarize some of the things I appreciated. When you eliminated the player flex place, you lowered the parking demands, appreciate that. You didn't need to do a 25-year storm, you weren't required to do that, but you're doing that. And, you know, if you just do simple math, you're going to have, what, 186 new parking places immediately, and then one year after the open, we're going to have 311 new parking places, and that's if I use the minimum. So, and then that doesn't include the discussion that we're going to have later in the incentive agreement that you brought up about more improvements of the Carolina. So I really appreciate it, this feels like a, a path forward. And, and then if the anecdotal evidence is right, what you said on the east parking, adding 35 parking spaces to the east parking, but what we really got to factor in is the 48 new employee parking, and you had employees parking in that east parking lot, so that 35 east parking spaces you're adding could, if you get...
if you get all your employees to park in the new lots, could equate into a number that's much larger than 35 additional parking places immediately at these parking. You estimate it could be at least 10 more, maybe 20 or I don't know. So, so I, I just wanted to make sure that we say the math out loud. That's what we have now and that doesn't include the, what we, the discussion we're going to have about long-term fix at the Carolina. And I just feel like that is a, a strong path forward.
Thank you Kevin. Judy?
Can I go last?
Excuse me, any, any general comments? Jane?
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 Well, I, I started out really concerned because I didn't know very much about how the whole thing was going to work. And concerned that there were going to be, you know, so many changes to that campus. And I wanted to make sure that we were going to be able to get to feasible. And that was important, not just for what, how the campus works, but for how, you know, everybody's concerned in the village. And so by being able to take everything apart and look at all the puzzle pieces and rearrange them on the dining room table and, and try and put them back together. It's been very helpful and I, I appreciate you coming through that process with, with me.
I appreciate the questions. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's been a learning experience for us as well.
Before I call on Judy for her comments, I believe Mr. Paschley may have some comments he wishes to make or not.
Sure, I, I I go back mayor to a meeting when we were having enthusiasm about this opportunity with various state officials and, and others and going around the room, everyone, there were a lot of heads nodding, but, but your comment at the time was, you know, it's all great, but where the village of Pinehurst sits is where the rubber meets the road. And, and that's, that's the process that you guys have had to manage. And while, while others have moved on, we're still here and we're still working on this. And, and we're going to make sure that the implementation on this great opportunity is consistent with, with our community. And, and like many of you have said, I'm proud of how the process has unfolded. I've seen that very collaborative approach. I think our staff, the village staff, the professional staff, the historic preservation committee, planning and zoning, neighborhood meetings. Our fourth appearance in front of you all this evening. Each time we've come, we've come listening, we've come to be a partner. We knew that there would be concerns expressed and we wanted to understand them and I think we've taken them as we've heard them and we've tried to address as many of them as we possibly can. I remember council member Hoagman talking about, one of her goals was when everyone comes here that she wants them to have a pleasant experience. And I think that was very well said and it's a goal that we equally share. It's in our best interest, all of us, when someone comes to our, our community to make sure they have a pleasant experience. So we share that goal and I think this plan that we've got in front of you tonight will accomplish that. We believe it's the proper plan for the space. It was developed with input from the community. It's been modified multiple times as we've outlined to address areas of concern in the increasingly competitive resort environment that we find ourselves in. This plan allows us to continue to be a leader in the hospitality industry. And it positions us to be one of the very best venues to host championship golf in the country. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paschley, for your good comments and the feelings mutual back and forth. It's been a experience. It's not over yet. We got a lot to do to get it all done and have the US Open here. But, but let's see what council has to say about that. Judy, do you have comments or other issues please?
I do have a couple of comments. One, I've mentioned this to Dick, but I really appreciated receiving this book. And as you thumb through it, there were some pretty ugly structures in here. And, and so we have evolved to a very nice structure at our, our current campus and, and I think the thoughtful attention to detail and to the character by the resort is really important. And, and I think it's something that in the end we'll all be proud of. I just happened to catch a, a press conference last week with Mike Davis and John Bodenhammer. And one of, and I didn't realize it was the first question, but the first public question they got was, well, last year in New York, you announced Golf House Pinehurst. What are you going to announce this week? And well, they weren't going to announce anything. And he, and John went on to talk about the cathedral that Pinehurst represents, that that's the type of, of quality of, of, you know, open courses that they're looking for is wanting to create a cathedral. And it just made me begin to think and visualize what the new drive down Carolina Vista will be like. As you're going to come in from the traffic circle over here on the right, you're going to have the two-story USGA building. And beyond that, beyond that, you'll have the entrance to the lodge. And over on the left, of course, you'll have the resort campus. I, I think that in the, at the end, you know, in 2024 in September, after we've all enjoyed the, the US Open that happened in June, we're going to look back and, and realize what a dramatic drive that's going to be. Magnolia Lane certainly stands out there in terms of at the Masters. But the surrounding, the environment around Magnolia Lane is nothing like we have in Pinehurst. I mean, and so I think, I think that John's comment about the cathedral characteristic is what, you know, it's, it's a heck of a standard that we're setting for their other choices, for, for their program. But I think that at the end of the day, we're all going to be glad we we're here tonight and, and that we're part of making this happen. Thank you.
Judy, thank you very much. Is there a motion with respect to ordinance 27 dash, wait a minute, 21-07? Should I get that right? Over here Judy, Judy, go ahead.
I'll read that note.
I've got, I've got Jeff's.
You're going to have to craft some.
I, I got it. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to read that with these amendments, okay. I move to approve ordinance 21-07, amending the official zoning map for a portion of, portion of Moore County PID 00025800 to allow for construction of a hotel with associated meeting and locker room facilities, a bar and related facility amenities with agreed upon conditions as amended. Condition number seven. The final part of that sentence will read with the final development agreement to be approved by the village one year after the building permit is issued for the lodge. Condition number nine. The timing for this condition is changed to the parking spaces shall be constructed prior to July 1st, 2022. Condition number 10. The timing for this condition is changed to improvements or subject to compliance with the village's PDO and ESSM and shall be constructed prior to July 1st, 2022. Period.
A second?
There's a motion by Judy Davis and there's a second by Lydia Bosch with respect to ordinance 21-07. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
I, I will throw out one other non-issue here for all those who enjoy. You might get with Kenneth Boyd. He also has books written on the Holly. And he was working on the Carolina. So if we can get him to finish those, I think they're great, great things for our, our village. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your faith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I would recommend maybe a five, five-minute break for the village council. I'm going to resume with our next discussion.
Thanks though.
What time John?
Five minutes.
Okay.
Call the meeting back to order June 22, 2021. We'll pick up with our regular agenda. And the next item will be agenda item number seven. On the American Rescue Plan Special Revenue Fund Ordinance. Jeff?
All right. Thanks, John. And Brooke's getting ready here. What this is all about is in order to accommodate our acceptance and eventual expenditure of the American Rescue Plan funds, we need to set up this special fund so that we can properly account for them. So take away, Brooke.
Perfect. Exactly. As part of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 that was signed into law on March 11th, we will receive funds from the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in order to respond to the impacts of COVID. The village is expecting to receive approximately $4.86 million in total. Those will be received in two different distributions. The first half is expected in July. Originally, when this memo was drafted to you all a week or so ago, we thought it may come by the end of the month. However, today I received confirmation from the League of Municipalities and the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office that the funds will not be received until July. A little bit of a delay there. And the second half of that total $4.86 million distribution will be distributed a year later. The funds must be obligated by December 31 of 2024, and they must be spent by December 31 of 2026. And I will emphasize that $4.86 million is an estimate at this point. That is not a firm number. We are awaiting the final amount, and we should know that in July also. The village's distribution of these funds must be recorded separately in our accounting system, as Jeff mentioned. So we need to track those separately. So I'm recommending that we create a separate special revenue fund using a grant project ordinance that is allowed by the general statutes, and that will span the life of this grant. It will remain open like a capital project fund is until those grant funds are spent. This separate fund will provide the clear documentation of that grant revenue coming into the village and it being received, and how it is expended over the next several years. It will remain open until the project is complete and those grant funds are spent. The ordinance available for your consideration tonight includes estimated revenues and appropriations of the $4.86 million. However, the expenditure account that we are using is only included for budgetary purposes at this point. We do not anticipate expending these funds in fiscal year 2021 as we are continuing to research the eligible uses and the best use of those funds. But the budget does have to balance, so we have to have an offsetting appropriation. So we're just including this as a budgetary tool at this point. Once a plan is developed to expend those funds according to the eligible uses that are provided by the U.S. Treasury, then we will present to you all a budget amendment to move those funds out of this temporary budget expenditure line into the appropriate accounts that they'll be expended. So attached for your consideration to this agenda item was a Grant Project Ordinance 21-10 that will create that multi-year special revenue fund to track the use of the village's American Rescue Plan distribution. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Brooke, I had one question after reading the memo. The funds are coming in two tranches, I believe.
Correct. Correct.
And is it true that the full amount from both tranches don't have to be spent until the 26th date, or has have to be spent by '24 and the rest by?
No, you are correct. Both, you have until 2024 to obligate. So for example, I'm anticipating that that term "obligate" would mean enter into a contract, for example. And then you would actually have to spend the funds so many out the door by 2026. But you are right, there's no deadline for you to spend the first portion of that by 2024. Good question.
And then I have a question about, do you have any inkling of how we can spend this money? What are legitimate uses?
Yeah. We, well, a couple of weeks ago, Brooke and Jeff and Lauren and I, I think Lauren was there as well, sat down for a couple of hours strategizing how we might investigate using these funds. There are a lot of strings attached to these funds and very specific types of things that we can, we can spend them on. If we had, for example, a water and sewer service, you know, in the village, we would have greater ability to use them than we do because of the infrastructure category that's specifically tied there. We did come up with a few things that we're going to focus on. I, you know, I don't know if Brooke has had any revelations since we last talked. I don't expect that we're going to expend all $4.8 millions of dollars of this in legitimate ways, so.
Hope we do.
And I will say too, a lot of the guidance that we're getting from the League of Municipalities, the NC Pro, you know, the National League of Cities, everybody that is providing all of these webinars and informational pieces, they are encouraging us to not rush spending these funds. They are encouraging us to think strategically. And I think we can also pull from best practices as we see some of these larger municipalities begin some projects. I think that will really open our eyes to some options that we may have that maybe we haven't thought of yet and eligible ways to use those funds. So I would encourage us to, to observe what others are doing as well as the needs of our community as well.
I would encourage us to work with Triangle J Cog.
Yes.
I have a board meeting coming up, and that's going to be the major subject. And that's other municipalities and how they're, and they've already preliminarily had some discussions at the tri-cities. I expect more discussion at the tri-cities level. There is even a discussion of a possibility of working together.
I don't think pedestrian facilities qualify.
Not directly.
But I do think your notion about leveraging the League of Municipalities as well as Triangle J, things for us to see eyes and ears of what other people are doing.
Yeah. Definitely. Everybody's going to have to kind of figure this out together.
Yeah. Exactly. Group rope.
What the penalty would be if you spend it on something that's not qualified or becomes unqualified, you got to return the money.
Correct.
If you've already invested the money, then you're really in a pickle because you're going to have to return something that would come out of general fund.
Right.
Okay. So that's why we're keeping this in a special fund, Mark, for that purpose, easy to track. Probably it's required to have it in a fund like that, I'm guessing.
Required to track separately.
At least in North Carolina, yeah.
Yes, it is required to track separately in our accounting system, and this is just a really clear, obvious way to track the funds and how they are spent.
Totally agree.
Mm-hmm. Very transparent.
But Triangle J, you know, were a member and they'll, they'll work for us if we ask them. I mean, so, I mean, he's.
And we've already had dialogue at the manager level with, with Lee and.
Yeah, Lee is, I mean, is the resource. So, I mean, I feel like, you know, they're going to be testing the waters with these larger municipalities, and if they can do it, we can do it.
I believe we need a motion on this one. Any other comments, though? Side of number seven, we have a motion to approve 21-10, please.
I'll move to approve ordinance 2110, adopting a multi-year special revenue fund to track Coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for the village of Pinehurst.
That's a motion by Jane Hoagman. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Kevin Drum. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number eight. Consider changes to the position classification and pay plan.
I guess while Angie's getting settled here, this is something that we do every year. We have a systematic process by which we review one-third of our positions every year so that we're systematically looking at each one on average every three years. We engage with an outside consultant to do the analysis that does this professionally, comes in and interviews our folks and takes a look at the job descriptions and, and goes out and does some market analysis for us with comparative communities to help us understand where our current pay and classification sits in comparison to those competitive communities out there so that we can come to you and make recommendations on how to change it.
Thank you, Jeff. Angie?
All right. As Jeff said, every position is looked at at least once every three years. If responsibilities change in a job, we may evaluate it before that three-year timeframe, but at least every three years, we're looking at every position here, here at the village. You can see in the memo that I provided to you, we have a few changes that we would like to recommend this year. The departments that were reviewed, the IT department, the police department, the planning department, and a few administrative positions because we had some responsibility, responsibility changes. I'll just go, go down the list, and if you have questions, please stop me and let me know, and we can talk about those as we get to them. So I'll start with the police department. We have an administrative coordinator, and the recommendation was to change that title from administrative coordinator to administrative and telecommunications coordinator. That person does supervise the telecommunications group as well as some forensic responsibility, some evidence responsibility, administrative responsibility. So there's a lot of, lot of moving parts of that, that particular position. It was just a title change to be a little bit more reflective of what she, what she does. The police officer positions, police officer, senior police officer, and master police officer, they are recommending, and we're recommending to you to move each of those up one grade. And that would impact several, several employees at the, at the PD. They're also recommend, or we're recommending to you to move the deputy chief up one grade and the chief up one grade. The other positions actually are classified appropriately, and there's no need to move those, that being the lieutenants, the sergeants, and the telecommunications group.
Can I jump in here, Angie?
Absolutely.
John asked me a pretty good question a day or two ago about, about this, and particularly with the police department positions. And his question was along the lines of, in this market and with what's going on around the country and how hard it is to attract police officers, do we want to be leading? And what I, what I assured him was that as a result of this, this recommended change, we actually will be leading the market a little bit. So we think that the change is appropriate.
We will. The climate, the way it is today, it's difficult enough to get police officers who want to be police officers and to come work in the field. So we want to try everything we can do to attract them and to attract them here to Pinehurst. So we're hoping that will be a helpful recruiting tool for us as well. Moving on to the planning department, there were a few recommendations there. The planning and zoning specialist position, we're recommending to move that up one grade. And we have now two people that serve in that role. We added, if you recall, a few weeks ago, or maybe a couple of months ago, when we brought the budget to you originally, you allowed us to go ahead and start the recruiting process for that additional headcount, and we have done that and we have filled that position. So the next is, I'm going to make a change to this as I'm talking to you. I realize the original recommendation was to change the title of principal planner to planning supervisor. Actually, we want to keep the principal planner on our pay grade. We want to add a planning supervisor, not a, not a person, just add that, that, that title, that position. That is just to continue to have some upward mobility for the, for the planners that are currently in that position.
Yeah. In other words, in other words, we want to keep the principal planner position on the classification plan just from the standpoint of technical expertise.
Right.
And allowing people to stratify themselves in our planning department. But the planning supervisor is a supervisory position that we, we need to recognize separately in our organization.
Correct. That would affect Alex, Alex Cameron. He currently sits, sits as the principal planner, and because he is supervising the other planners and the planning specialists, he would become the planning supervisor. And it's recommending that, that we, we move that up one grade as well. Then we have the planning inspections director. We're recommending to move that position up a grade as well. And it was presented in the budget that we wanted to add a part-time code technician to assist Angel in the code compliance realm, and we want, we want to officially add that position to the pay scale at grade 18. Recreation superintendent, we added this position last year, and we actually had it fully evaluated this year, and we're recommending to move that from a grade 22 to a grade 24, which is more realistic for the actual functions of that job. In the IT department, we have the network administrator, and that is a title change and a grade change. The title change is going to IT infrastructure administrator. When the title was, when the position was originally created, it was primarily network, but we do a lot of cloud-based activity. We've got security concerns, and that person handles all of that. So it encompasses more of what, what the person in that role actually does now. And the recommendation is also to move that position up one grade. We also have an administrative position in the admin department. Right now, it's an administrative assistant, and we're recommending to move that position from administrative assistant to administrative and data coordinator. This person would supervise the front desk, and they would, they also assist the organizational performance director. So they assist Lauren with all the data, gathering the data and doing some, some analysis on that data. And that more closely captures what that person does. And we're recommending that move from a grade 15 to a grade 18.
Position also supervises the welcome center.
That's correct. Sorry, that is correct. And all the volunteers there. There are a lot of them. There are a lot of them. So there were not really any changes to the policy per se this year. The only other recommendation is to actually move, adjust all the pay grades by 1.2%, which was what COLA, the average COLA ended up to be for 2020. So the pay grade, the pay scales that you have in front of you, that includes the 1.2% adjustment, and we do that every year. It's gonna be a little higher for next year, we're anticipating, or a lot higher, however you look at that. That summarizes everything. Does anybody have any questions?
Jane, please.
So the recreation superintendent is going up two pay grades, and what's the reason for that change?
So last year, it was a newly created position, and it was created after the review that we did last year. And what I did was I took the job description and I, based on the functions of the job, I looked at some comparative data and did a close match to what it was. Well, that person's been in this role now for the last year, and some of those functions have adjusted. They're managing the entire facility, they're managing the part-time folks who help manage that facility on the weekends, they're also supervising two full-time folks, and some of those folks are actually supervising others, so they've got some indirect reports as well. So they're.
There's a more fundamental thing going on here, actually.
Yeah.
Last year, when we created the position, we kind of guessed. This is the first time we've had it studied by this MAPS group.
Right.
And so this is what came back after doing the outside analysis of what that position entails.
Many times when you're comparing a job to other positions that you see, you're doing the best you can based on what other people have, what other towns have listed as the primary functions. So sometimes you can miss those, sometimes they're not exact matches. So this group comes in and does a correction on that because they've got more familiarity, and they're doing a little bit deeper dive into the details of what those positions do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council members for Angie? Lydia?
I just want to follow up on something you said when you first got started. You do this every three years. What if you, there's a category you look at, and then something happens in the market that we really need to look at something before three years later? How do we, how are we made aware of that? How do we deal with it?
Yeah, if we know that there's been a significant change, like for instance, in public safety, and if there's been issues and social unrest in a police department, we would pull that group in a little sooner, and we would review that group a little sooner.
Yeah, we're not absolutely rigid on one-third this year, one-third next year, and so on. We'll modify it slightly as we go.
Correct. And we would adjust our budget projections for that.
But it's good to have a plan every year.
Got to have somewhere to start.
Absolutely right.
That's right.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve this? Number eight.
I move to approve resolution 21-12, amending the policy on administration of the position classification and pay plan for the village of Pinehurst.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane Hogeman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Angie.
Thank you.
Move on to item number nine, lease agreement for rental of village property. Jeff?
All right, we've got the annual barn lease down there for the folks that move horses around the country.
The horse transportation guy.
That's correct. Scott Norris Horse Transportation.
Yeah.
So this is a renewal of the lease that expires June 30th. It's a 60-month term. We did include a 3% increase based on the CPI. You know, I know we had some discussions about that this week, so if we'd like to talk about that further, be happy to do that. This lease will cover the dates for the 2024 U.S. Open, so we do have some language in there related to when the USGA has exclusive use of the property that the tenant may have to vacate those services. We hope to be able to work something out with USGA where they still have access, but it'll be up to them to provide that since we already have an agreement with them in place. But the tenant did indicate that they would be able to make other arrangements if needed, so.
You mean, the horse transportation company would make other arrangements? Is that what you meant?
That's correct.
Because the USGA.
Yeah, he would have to base his operations for those two weeks offsite somewhere else.
Okay. So that's an ongoing, that's the question I had, this is an ongoing operation?
It is.
It's not just during the harvest season or the equestrian events? It's something that sees.
Yeah, he has basically three or four trailers that are based down there on the site, and they are in and out of the property daily. They go north, they go south, they go west, and bring horses back and forth.
I would also say he's an anchor for that facility. He's an anchor that kind of is important to the long-term success.
His father was a longtime trainer at the Harness Track, Buck Norris, so he's had ties to the facility for longer than I've been here, so, and that's a long time.
Any other comments, Mark?
No.
I think one of the things that you referred to over the last couple days in reading is, is not just this lease, but the policy. It would seem that, well, as Angie just said, we, through the COLA calculation, we change our salary ranges, and that's based on COLA. Here, you're dealing with a CPI, I think, right?
That's correct.
Which calls for potentially, in this case, a higher increase, 4.4%, I think it was, compared to three. So take us through how we got to that.
Really, what we were looking for, there was a couple factors. One, we wanted to try to be consistent with the language that we have in our other contracts. Now, that are contracts that we're paying for services, and that protects the village so that the increase doesn't go above three. This is kind of the flip side here, where we would benefit if we went with the CPI at the 4.4, which was April, it was actually 5.6 in May, but we are proposing to change that to April because it gives us a little more time to process the contract and work through the timeframe for when the lease would renew. One thing, too, when I went into this was, while we think COVID is done, you know, we're still coming out of COVID, and we wanted to be a little aware of that and not put a big increase on a tenant who may or may not have struggled over the last year while COVID's been going on, so whether that's a determining factor moving forward, I don't think it will be. And when the leases come up next year for the track restaurant and the tax shop, I think COVID will be behind us, and if we want to look at whatever the CPI is, that is the adjustment, then I think that's appropriate. But I don't think it's not appropriate now if we want to go ahead and go by what the CPI is. That's just something that I was thinking of as we were doing the renewal.
Well, with this, this is a.
This is a five-year term.
Five-year lease, yeah. So you review that every year?
That's correct. Every April, then, we would look at it, and it could adjust annually by up to 3% the way it's written now.
All right. And has it been a sort of max 3% for this customer in the past, or do you go more directly sometimes to the CPI number?
There was not a max. It was based on the CPI previously. Like I said, we were just trying to be consistent with our contract language that we have on the other side, so.
I guess one of the questions out there is, everybody thinks inflation's gonna, you know, really be with us, and is it a service to the customer to not raise the amount as much as it might be in one term and then come back and it's a lot more in the next? I don't know how it works with this particular person.
At the very least, it provides some consistency where they know at most it's gonna be 3%, that it could increase next year. We used to have a similar clause in the standardbred lease agreements, but because those are annual agreements that don't renew, we took that out, so.
So our policy across the board is to max 3% for any kind of rentals like this that we have? I don't know how many there would be, but.
Yeah, really, at the Harness Track, we only have the three, where we're leasing village property, and I wouldn't say that it's policy, but I think it's been practice in those other agreements for our service contracts. So we're just trying to be consistent here. Certainly open to changing that if that's the direction that you would like us to do.
I hadn't been aware until now that it was sort of a max 3%, that there was anything other than the CPI. That's why it caught my eye, and I think some other. Are there other questions about this or policy? Do we, does this come up in the past few years on, as a policy? Do we want to have anything further to say on this?
This lease is relatively new.
Correct. Three years old.
Three years old now, so.
Yeah.
To say we have a policy on this is probably not.
Okay.
Not really appropriate, but there's established precedent maybe, but, and it is, like Mark said, it's the only facility that we lease to outsiders, so.
And I just want to stress his importance of the success of that track long-term, him being park bear. That was a no-brainer three years ago. Yes, yeah, a horse transportation guy at a track that we want to be successful makes a lot of sense, you know? So that's, I wanted, I jumped all over that, you know, wanting to get him in there.
Well, I thought, I thought you had indicated too, Kevin, that this was a person who'd been with us for a long time, or rented, therefore rented from us for a long time.
That's correct.
But then what's the three-year, it's short.
Something changed. What was the change?
He was a trainer previously, so his father trained horses at the track.
Name's very familiar, yeah.
And then he began training horses as his father got older and then ultimately passed away, and then he decided that instead of being in the training business, he would rather do the transportation. He kind of did that on the side, I think, over the years, but he just felt like that was a better business model for him at the time than being a trainer, so.
New entrepreneurship.
That's correct. And when we initially set this lease up three years ago, the monthly rate was similar to what the cost of a stall rental was at that time as well, because there's nine stalls in the barn, so by getting that amount for 12 months, it was pretty close to if we had a standardbred in there during the season and then didn't receive any rent in the off-season, so it was comparable in terms of the amount of revenue we would get, so.
So this is an individual who with other family have been longtime renters of space at the Harness Track, right?
I would say since at least the 50s, somewhere in that timeframe.
Be long-term, yeah.
Seasonal rental, not year-round like he is now.
The father also had a mobile home on the track at the time. If you recall, there were some mobile homes there.
That's right.
He was one of those residents as well, so.
Okay, all right. So he's changed the business to be in the transportation business, and was he affiliated with the harness races or more the equestrian events and this sort of thing?
Yeah, he was a standardbred trainer.
Standardbred trainer, okay.
I think he will ship whatever horse a customer needs, whether it's dressage, thoroughbred, standardbred, though, so.
And this is for the rental of one barn?
Correct.
With nine stalls and, does he live in the barn?
He does. No, he does not live in the barn. He's a resident of Pinehurst, though.
Okay, okay. So when it came up three years ago, he's gonna change the business model and be in the transportation business. We did this lease. He uses the barn. For what purpose does he?
If he's got an overnight stay, if he's coming from New York to Florida, he may stay over, put the horses in the stalls, and then reload them the next morning. He does have a couple of miniature ponies that are in the barn full-time, so he does have some live animals in the barn year-round, so.
Okay, okay. I'm asking all the questions here, but I don't need to. Anybody else? Jane, go ahead.
Setting aside this particular lease, I would imagine that what we try to do if we're gonna enter into a long-term lease, like a five-year lease with somebody, we try to figure out what is fair market value for those premises now that everybody can agree to. And then we try, over the term of the lease each year, to keep up with that fair market value by adjusting the base rent in accordance with the CPI. If we put a cap so that we can't take advantage of the entire CPI, then what happens is that we not only fall behind each year, but it snowballs. It gets worse every year. It compounds because we're not getting, we're not getting the whole 4.4% this year. We're only getting 3%. So then next year, when we look at the next one, we're not only gonna not get, maybe it'll be 5% is the real CPI, and we won't, we won't get all that 5%, but also, we're only gonna be getting 3% of an artificially small number. So it's gonna compound. So I, I'm not understanding, I've been listening to the conversation, I'm not understanding whether this structure of an escalation clause is a policy of the village. I mean, I can see us asking for it if we're the ones who are gonna pay out. This is a different kettle of fish.
Correct.
And if what we're, so I want to understand better about that escalation clause structure because I, I don't think putting the cap on when we're renting out village property is a good idea.
Would it be helpful to pull up the language in the lease agreement?
I know what the lease, the language says. I don't think it's a.
It's same for everybody else, would it?
Well, it's fine with me, but.
Yeah.
Limiting the escalator to 3% even though the CPIs might be higher is not, I don't think that's the way to do it. If we're trying to do a favor, is the wrong word, but if we're trying to make an accommodation for a prospective tenant because of long-term loyalty or whatever other factors, I don't know that this is the way to do it, but it's, the lease is already gone, he's already signed it, so it's sort of like, you know, at this point, how do we, how do we change that? But I would like to rethink the policy of the structure of escalation clauses, and if we want to make an accommodation for a particular tenant who we think may not otherwise rent from us, I don't know that that's the way to do it. Because when we, on a lease like this, we're gonna get out to the end of the five years, and maybe it should, maybe in fairness, the fair market value should have gone from $11,000 a year to $15,000 a year. I'm just making up numbers. But we're only at $12,500. So we're gonna have to go back to that tenant and say, you know, you've been paying only $12,500, but now we have to ask you for $15,000. That's gonna be a big jump, and we're gonna be reluctant to make that ask. So I think we've got to keep the structure of the escalator clause realistic. That's its purpose, is to follow fair market value, but maybe we don't do it on this particular one just because, you know, here we are in the middle of everything, but I think we should think through how we do that. There are other ways to give somebody an accommodation, to give them a couple of months free rent or, you know, something like that for signing up or, you know, kind of things that don't lock us in.
Yeah, there is an offset written into this language. It doesn't happen that often, but in periods of deflation, this language says that the lease will not go down. So there's, I mean, there's some, there's some risk management on both sides of this.
The problem is we're about to allegedly enter a period of inflation, and so 3%, you know, might not cover and doesn't cover what the current inflation is. And Jane's point is that that just compounds over time. The flip side of this is the marginal cost, right? If the barn's not rented, there is no income.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, those are some of the balancing acts here, and to have a steady tenant there is pretty valuable, but it would probably be better if we had our contract read that the maximum is the CPI. We can always be gracious and lower it, but I think that, you know, if we were, if the CPI is our benchmark, let's write that into the language, too.
Yeah.
But he's a one-of-a-kind lease, right?
Yes, that's correct. The others are the restaurant and the tax shop, and it would be very easy to adjust this and go back to them because it's not an executed agreement at this point until council is approved and the mayor has signed it, so we could go back and revisit that, if that's the direction you're giving us.
I agree, you know, with both Judy and Jane on that and broadly, but when it comes But when it comes to the standard breads and how their, the business is threatened, it's a challenge right now. And, and how it's important to not put roadblocks in the way right now. So I, I just would carve out this as a little different than a standard agreement. This is a industry that has showed some decline. And we have this anchor tenant that does transportation for that industry. I, I think it's a terrible timing to do this, but I agree with you beyond, and our, our properties that, that aren't in this status that the standard breads are in. You know, I'm just, I'm just trying to deal with the reality of the situation. But I think I agree with you beyond the track. Does that make any sense?
That's, that's what I was saying, too. There's, there's the structure of this particular clause, which, which has pitfalls because of the compound nature of the snowballing, whatever, and maybe better ways to handle an accommodation. But I, I don't know that we can make a change to this one now.
Well, I think Mark said that your, his normal procedure was to put the letter together, put the lease together, send it out, have them sign it, so that if in discussion, staff and council didn't make a change, we can sign it and send it forward. But we have the opportunity, and you think it'd still be fair, to change this tonight if we chose to do so. I'm not necessarily recommending that, but I think that was my understanding from what you had written to us.
That's correct.
You could change that.
We have the opportunity to do that.
Yes.
Now, I'm noticing in here, though, and Jeff pointed out, there is a maximum increase of 3%. That's in the contract. That's not, I thought it was something you were offering this year, but it is in the contract. And on the contrary to that is the potential for a decrease, in which case the rent would not decline, as pointed out in this section number two of the lease agreement, 2A. Now, this is the third year of the lease, right? Third year of the first lease we've had. Now we're.
Ending this month, yes.
Going to a five-year. All right. So in the last three years, didn't the CPS decline? And did we hold the rental where it was? Or did we change that? Or was this not the lease arrangement then?
Last year, if I recall, I believe the CPI was, maybe it was 1.2 two years ago.
Sounds right from last year.
Yeah, 1.2. So it was adjusted 1.2% previously. If there was a negative, then the rent would hold the line. It did not decrease, so.
I thought there might have been a decrease in the CPI in, in the term of this lease, which maybe it's wrong.
I'm, I'm a little fuzzy on where the 4.8 number came from.
4.4 was the CPI as of April 2021.
All right. But for all of our budget, budgeting purposes, we use a December to December CPI analysis. So you can cherry pick it and look at it, yeah. I mean, this spring it's very high, but everything else we're doing, we're going December 31st to December 31st. Right, right, Brooke?
I do think, and Brooke may correct me, I do think for the Harness Track, the standard bred leases, those are based on an April CPI, because we have to get those contracts to the trainers in April before they leave the property.
Train, the, the training season.
That's correct.
We don't, we don't, it's not standard everywhere across our business.
But I think that's where the April came from.
Yeah.
Right, that is correct. And for the, as we were discussing in the previous agenda item that Angie presented, the COLA, that is based on a January to December. It's an average for the calendar year. A lot of our contracts, though, that are written for us as a vendor also, the, the terms are based on a specific month of CPI instead of the average over an entire year. It's based on a single month. And so in this case, this would be based on whatever the April number is, you know. And so if that were to be the case, and without that cap, it could be drastically different than the month before or the month after.
Well, that's good perspective.
That's a classic treatment in a contract, you know. The, the ending date, beginning date of that contract is the reference point.
What you're referring to, yeah.
Yeah, right.
The 4.4%, that was April 2020 to April 2021, correct?
That's right, yeah.
It was a year, but it was a 12 months, April, not.
It's a month, right, 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 year of a year, right.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I'm speaking for myself, I think maybe for the council. I don't like the policy in this way, so I would hope we wouldn't continue that. I can see in this particular case why there's some driving forces here that maybe makes this okay. One of them being that in a declining environment, declining rate environment, the rental won't go, won't go down. But I do think, and I think others have articulated very well, it's not the right policy, I would suggest, for the village to follow. How does the rest of the council feel about that? Should we let this go as it is, but not, hopefully not see this policy?
Yes, I'm, I'm carving out the standard breads, you know, but I agree with you on everything else, you know. Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying that it's threatened, and, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to recognize that.
Yeah. I think, given the fact that this is a five-year lease, if you want to get it right, this is the time to do it. So if you want to make this better, do it now.
Okay, but I'm just.
I was struck by the term. We've had three-year, and now it's going to five. Was there a reason again for that, Mark, or?
There was. The initial three-year term was to give us time a little closer to the US Open, so that when we did the renewal, we would have a little better idea of what USGA might be doing on the site, if there was any changes to the current lease agreement. So it was just to, just to give us time to set this up to cover the US Open, so. Normally, these are typically a five-year lease. That's what you'll see at the restaurant. That's what you'll see at the tax shop.
Is it five-year with the tax shop and the restaurant?
They are.
They're all five-year?
Yep. So they, they expire June 30th of next year, and then we would enter into another five-year agreement, in theory, within.
And I think you said this earlier, but we don't, they don't have the same.
They do not at this point. So, and if, and if the direction is to take out the cap and base it on whatever month CPI we want, we would do that next year when we do those renewals.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, Lydia, you're, what do you, how do you feel on this?
I, I'm fine with doing this right now, but it's concerned me that we haven't, if we, if we say CPI, let's stick with CPI.
Okay.
And that's standard in leases. And I, and I like to carve out for this guy because of the situation. But CPI is not, that's, that's just a standard provision in leases these days.
I'm trying to protect our, what's the best word? Equine industry, the hardest horses, the standard breads. But I, I don't know, maybe this is the right time to make the change. And then it's, it's there, it's for five years. You know, something happens with the business or issues come up, they can always approach us.
I don't think another 1.4% is going to be a detriment to this business.
It's 150 bucks.
Hold on, no. Mark, help me understand, help me understand why, how, how we can change this next year.
For this contract or the other ones?
This one.
This one, I think if we want to change it, we do it now, before we have a signed lease agreement. The restaurant and tax shop, we could do next year, because that's when they come up.
Okay.
No, no, I, I took it to mean, if we're going to change it, this is the time, Jeff, in this current lease.
I don't, I don't think so. I, I think it's, I think it's awkward to do that. And I, I think that this tenant has accepted a package. And if we start picking it apart, it's not going to be the same pack. It's, he's going to say, well, I, I only agreed to this rent because I knew that I was going to have a predictable CPI escalator, you know, this kind of thing. I think we leave this lease, but we look at the policy, and for future leases, we do it differently.
I, I agree with that, and.
I don't, I mean, I'm with Lydia. If it's going to be CPI, let's make it CPI. And you could always go to him and say, we're changing it to the CPI, but for 2021 to 22, we'll, we'll max out at 3% if you want to.
For this year, yeah.
For this year. But that next year, we, you know, because we, it is a big unknown right now as to what inflation's going to be like.
Okay, so, so allow a 3% cap this year, which, which we, it's in the letter, but right into the lease that effective next year, with, still within the five-year contract, we will go strictly to a CPI number.
Or.
You, you always have the option.
Or you just keep it at 3% and tell him in the future it's going to be CPI, you know. His next contract's going to be CPI.
Well, that's five years out.
And it's not as awkward, you know.
But I think you always have the option on the CPI increase, whether you enforce it or not. You, you don't have to invoke it. You could, for whatever, I mean, again, marginal costs are really true here. Would you rather get 11 grand from him or nothing? You know, so, I mean, I think you've got to always weigh that.
And to that point, Judy, there have been times where the CPI has been X, and we have elected not to increase stall rent at the Harness Track because of the current state of the industry. So we have certainly done that in the past. Now, again, it's not a clause in those contracts now, but it did used to be, so.
Yeah, I mean, the point is you, you have the latitude if you, if you want to take it, but you always have the business prerogative to make the best deal you can, you know, all the way around.
Mark, haven't you had to been, be flexible in terms of, okay, you stick with CPI, but to Jane's point, you know, if things are tough out there, you know, with flexibility, allow a free month or two, just to keep, to Judy's point, keep somebody in there. No, no.
We are not allowed, under general statutes, we don't have that ability to offer free rent of village assets in that.
I think what she's, we would just forego a CPI increase, so.
All right, or I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Forego a CPI increase, certainly.
I guess my point is, I mean, we've heard from Mark so frequently about the things he does to keep the, the barn full and to keep revenue coming in. And, you know, if you stick with strict CPI and you find we're hurting, then let's use something to keep people in there, some, some level of flexibility, keep the money coming in, but not so strictly strict, stick to CPI.
Well, that's what they did. They did a 3% cap.
Exactly.
Now we're saying we're against it.
Well, no, I'm saying, my preference is to go to CPI, but if we find that we need to make some accommodation somehow, we know free rent won't work. But something else that you seem to be able to do to keep people there.
I think it's an extra sentence in there to say that the village reserves the right, or the village may or shall increase by CPI, but doesn't commit us to it every year.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that's the better, the better way here, to put something into the lease, that is your intention, Mark, to leave the increase for this first year at the 3%, but then be allowed to change that through the language you're talking about into the future and write that into the lease?
I mean, you actually have that sentence in there, you know, when you say that, that the increase shall be calculated as the annual percentage increase as of April 30th. I mean, that's.
Well, we could just drop the last sentence in paragraph 2A.
Yeah.
But I, I, I still think I wouldn't make a change to this lease. I'd take it this as a lesson for how we change the policy going forward, because this person has already negotiated a whole package.
I would change his future lease, though. I would agree to change his future lease, you know.
Next year or in five years?
Yeah, after, at the end of this lease, change it to CPI. You know, that's what I'm trying to say. I just don't like this awkwardness.
In five years.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, that's how important, I think, having Scotty Norris there is. I mean, you know, I don't think it's a big.
Well.
2026.
Yeah, but, but converting it to CPI in the future makes sense, but I just think at this point, just knowing, you know, I know at least he got, he emailed me and Mark. We know one track person that's leaving. I'm, I'm very concerned about the track. And I'm, I'm very concerned, I think, but I have no problem with it at the end of this lease and going to CPI, you know, but, but I think.
Yeah, maybe for some context or perspective, you know, at, at these rates, we're talking about roughly $10,000. 2%, even if we miss it by 2% next year, it's $200.
I mean, let's don't, let's don't destroy a relationship.
It's not a big enough number to worry about on this lease.
Let's don't destroy a relationship.
But we should take a lesson.
More, more than that in wages here tonight, talking about this.
Talking about it.
But I do agree with the concept of being consistent in the future, but I, I just don't want to mess this up.
It, it could be easy, just as easy as what Jane said. You take the last sentence out.
If he just wants CPI.
Where you block it into three and just say, hey, Scott, we're going to keep it at three this year. Next year is going to be CPI. And I do not think that would be an issue, honestly, so.
That's the solution I favor. Is that acceptable to council, that we, want to repeat, Jeff, would, I mean, Mark, what you just said?
Not for it, but I'm just going to.
Okay.
We, we could, we could remove the last line, the sentence that says the maximum increase in any given year shall not exceed 3%. Remove that, because the contract already references based on the CPI as of April 30. We could keep, we could let him know this year, we're going to do 3%, even though it was 4.4.
Yeah.
But moving forward, this time next year, it will be based on whatever the CPI. If it's 1.2, great. If it's 7.8, great, so.
I have a motion. I'm ready.
I, I wouldn't change this lease.
Yeah, and, and that's fine, yeah.
All right. Judy has, I was going to read one. Go ahead, Judy. Want a motion on this?
All right, I move to authorize the mayor is designated to execute a lease agreement for rental of barn 19 between the village of Pinehurst and Scott Norris Horse Transportation for the term of 60 months commencing on July 1st, 2021, and ending on June 30th, 2026. And.
Amended by the deletion of line, the last line in section 2A.
2A. As, the direction of the.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec leader. I mean.
There's a motion on the table.
A direction of the staff.
Everybody understand the motion? It's to delete the last sentence in 2A and keep the rest of the contract as is, the lease as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Raise your hands, please. If you're aye. How many ayes are there? Three? All in favor? All not in favor? Opposed? Three to two, the motion passes. Thank you. Brooke, thank you for your assistance there as well. Okay. Move on into, first of all, I think I understood from the clerk earlier, there are no comments by email tonight that will be circulated. Is that still true, Kelly?
No email comment.
Are there, we'll get to other business, but are there any comments from attendees? None. Is there other business before the council tonight? Judy, I'm going to say, Lydia, Kevin, Jane? Judy Davis, you have something?
Yeah. I, I would like to share that I've made a decision to unwind my fake retirement as my client, favorite client calls my version of work-life balance, and I do not intend to seek reelection for this position in the fall. I never expected to be on the village council, and it's been a wonderful diversion and jog in my career and life and enjoyment of being in Pinehurst. Love being part of this, love being, working with all of you and your predecessors and, and, but I think, but I've decided to step back from this role and, but you will see me on my VOP and.
I'll see you on that mic, I guarantee.
And I'm available to help out in any way and hope that the time that I've been here has been, you know, for the positive good of our community. And it's certainly been an honor and privilege to serve with all of you. Thank you.
Well, Judy, there'll be more to say at another time, but we certainly respect your decision on the one hand, and especially your work on the village council for Pinehurst. It's been wonderful. And I'll just remind you that the term doesn't end until late November, as you know. But we respect your decision. I'm sorry to hear it.
Got a lot of work to do.
But thank you.
Yeah, we do, we do.
And speaking of that work, is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and move into our work session, please?
Regular meeting.
There's a motion to adjourn the regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? It's all in favor. That's unanimous, rather. So we'll move then right into the work session.